More than 55. That's, you know.
If they have business, can they step outside until their business comes up?
Yeah, but I don't think there's anybody in here that has business with it.
The people who are on zoning and stuff like that.
Right, sure, right, right, okay. That is who we have, okay. Calvary Temple, okay. Sure, that's fine. Okay, okay, all right, all right. Where's Mr.? Okay, can I have your attention? I would like to. Like to call the, uh, November the 30th, 2020, uh, regular meeting to order. There's a couple of things that I would like to point out before we start the meeting. Number one, there was some miscommunication or misinformation. The council will not tonight be considering any type of mask mandate. It's not on the agenda, it's not on the schedule. So consequently, you know, we will accept some public comment on the issue simply because obviously the COVID situation is on a large number of people's minds. But there will be no vote, there'll be no council discussion on that particular issue, okay? The second thing is, I appreciate the fact that, you know, we're somewhat, you know, somewhat crowded in here. I would like for us to be as socially distanced as we possibly could. Again, I would, you know, make a plea for those of you that are not wearing masks to wear one if for no other reason, just to relieve the, you know, the tension that seems to exist on that particular subject. My job as chairman is threefold. Number one is to conduct a safe meeting. That's the number one thing on my mind. Number two is to be responsible, and number three, to be fair. So those are the three things that we're going to be looking at from the start. Okay, we will open up the meeting with an invocation from the Reverend Scott May of Calvary Temple, followed by the pledge of allegiance led by Mr. Joe Cronin. Please stand.
Heavenly Father, we come to you today and we thank you that this world is under your control, and so we know that nothing has surprised you or taken you by surprise. And Lord, I thank you tonight for each of these council members and the job that they're doing, and just the fact that you have continued to give them wisdom and knowledge, and we pray that you'll continue to do that. We also pray tonight, Lord, for your peace. Lord, we need your peace in each of our lives, and that, Lord, that would just come as we trust you to give the decisions that need to be made and for the future, Lord, that you would, and we come against this COVID, Lord, this disease, we ask you to eradicate it from our planet, that would make things easy, and we'd love for you to do that. But Lord, in the midst of this, Lord, I just pray that we would, each one, remember to honor and respect one another, and that it's okay to have an opinion, but that, Lord, ultimately, we have to respect one another, and that's how you're glorified, and that's how our lives are benefited. And so, Lord, tonight, we put this meeting in your hands, we ask you again to guide and direct it, and we give you the praise and glory for all of it in Jesus' name. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Right.
Councilman Cronin. Councilman Brazel. Councilman Ehlum. Councilman Hollander.
Here.
Councilman Hammond.
Here.
Councilwoman Schneider.
Here.
Councilman White.
Here.
We will begin the meeting tonight with a little bit out of order here, I guess, but what we're going to do is we're going to start off with comments by our county executive, and then, you know, then we'll get back to our normal list of on the agenda. Okay. Mr. Almond.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Thought I'd start out with a quote here from President Lincoln. "Without public sentiment, nothing can fail; without it, nothing can succeed. Consequently, he who molds public sentiment goes deeper than he who enacts statutes or pronounces decisions." As you know, that's sort of been our philosophy here since July, when people start talking about mask mandates and social distancing and all these sorts of things. And as you know, Mr. Chairman, we have conducted a campaign trying to educate people on the need to wear a mask, the need to go ahead and social distance, and we did that starting in July. If you recall, at one point, all the mayors, along with myself, we did a joint press release calling upon businesses for them to make that decision, but for them to go ahead and require masks if they so chose. And in the last three months, we've kind of redoubled our efforts. As you know, we've got some billboards up now, we did a mass mailing, we had people, I think 31 of our employees worked last Friday handing out masks. So we are very much involved in the educational effort. We think people should wear masks. Where we can enforce mask mandates, we've done that, and we've even required our employees to wear a mask. And, but the problem is, of course, in St. Louis City and County, they've ordered people to do certain things, and they haven't done as good a job, I think, in actually convincing them that it's the right thing to do. So what we've seen is basically, we've seen this sort of behavior in St. Charles County, and I saw that behavior as recently as two weekends ago. And I think it was largely due to the fact that people who have not been convinced that that type of behavior is not appropriate, who live in St. Louis City, St. Louis County in Illinois, coming out to St. Charles, and that was one of the main reasons that last Tuesday, or Wednesday, I guess, yeah, Tuesday, we had announced an 11 o'clock closing for our bars. We had a situation where for the most of the, you know, the last nine months, we had to deal with our people in our bars. But we had a situation after St. Louis County closed everything down, and Illinois had been closed down for a long time, and the city of St. Louis closed down 11 o'clock. So after 11 o'clock, the only place that people could socialize and drink in a bar-type setting was in St. Charles. And we felt that that was a situation that we needed to address, and so we did. The other thing we did a couple of days before that was to go ahead and send a letter to all the bar owners telling them that we would be sending out people to kind of observe on Wednesday, last Wednesday, which, as you know, is usually the biggest bar night, and that we asked them, as we had two times earlier, twice earlier, we've sent out letters to our bar and restaurant owners, asking them to please help us and try to get people under control. And both of the first two times, they did that. And I'm happy to report tonight that the information I got back this morning from our investigations on Wednesday night, our bars did a good job, again, up until 11 o'clock, of trying to keep people social-distanced, trying to keep them doing their responsible thing. And I want to just take this opportunity to thank the bar and restaurant owners for that level of cooperation. And again, you know, why are we all of a sudden looking at, you know, closing bars at 11 o'clock? Well, one of the things that's changed since our last meeting is that the governor has gone ahead and issued a state of Missouri public health warning, and he's basically suggested that cities, or excuse me, counties, that are in certain categories of extreme risk, there's things that they might want to consider doing. And you can see there, these are the governor's criteria, and all of those put us in this category one, which is an area of extreme risk. You see the sorts of things they're suggesting. They're suggesting, you know, that we strongly advise on masks, they're not suggesting that we mandate them. That's something we've already been doing. The occupancy, of course, the 11 o'clock closing is part of that. But again, I just want people to understand that, again, we are looking at the governor's recommendations, wanting them to understand we are in this area of extreme risk, we are looking at these things. But once again, neither us, neither the governor, or in most cases us, are actually mandating any of these things, but we are looking at them. Now, again, it was very easy to justify us doing things differently than St. Louis County for the first eight months or so of this. And if you look at this, those of you who are here for the first time, this is new, but everybody on the council has seen these over the last four or five months, and you can see that St. Charles County, which is the red, for the first three or four months, we were way, way below St. Louis City and County. They had two and a half to three times as many cases as we did. Now, sometime, the fourth week in July, for some reason, our cases grew faster, and for the life of me, I don't know why, maybe we'll figure it out someday, but for about a week there, we grew faster. But then for the next couple of months, we grew about the same. But then, starting in September, you can see that we grew faster, and, you know, to summarize here, what you can see now is, whereas before there was a lot of separation, now we're pretty much all in the same boat. We're pretty much all in the same boat. We've got the same number of cases, maybe even a few more per 100,000 people than St. Louis County. The issue is why? And we've got some people over there suggesting that the issue is because we don't have a mask mandate. I would suggest there are some other reasons why we no longer have this great advantage, and why we're kind of all in the same boat together now. And the most important one is we've tried to get our kids back in school. And if you look at the, you know, in other meetings we've had, the things, we've had the graph showing what the contract traces are telling us is the source of the exposures. If you look at that, remember what I had back in July, our exposures due to school was zero. Last week, our exposures due to school was 30%. So 30% of our exposures are due to the fact that we're trying to get our kids back in school. Now, we can have a debate about that. I personally have taken the position from the beginning that it's absolutely, we need to do everything we can, and I've applauded our school boards, and superintendents, and teachers, and everybody for doing a good job in a very difficult situation. But as you know, the, it was getting very, very difficult because of the CDC guidelines that required anyone within six foot of someone who was infected to then quarantine themselves. So what you had is a situation, if one student got sick, you'd have 20 or 30 kids in the class that would have to quarantine. To address that situation, the governor issued an alternative set of guidelines, which, again, were not mandatory, wasn't telling people what to do, he was giving people at the local level the option of adopting these guidelines. The five superintendents in the county came to us, they asked us to adopt these guidelines. It was not a simple task. Dimitri Sianci Chapman, our Director of Public Health, worked with them for, took almost a week to work out the details, but we have basically presented them with a version of the, it's almost identical to what the governor suggested, but we've given them a version of that, and now the ball is basically in the court of the school boards, okay? We have agreed that people who normally would be on quarantine because they had a contact with someone infected, not infected themselves, but simply a contact, okay, before, those people would have to stay out of school for 14 days. Same way with a teacher in the same situation. Under this new proposal, they will be able to go back to school, and so will the teacher, as long as they have a very strict mask mandate in place, and as long as they, you know, practice the social distancing and the other sorts of things that, once again, the schools are in a position to enforce. That teacher can see if everybody has a mask on, and it's very easy to enforce. So once again, the governor has given us that option with the requirement a mask mandate be involved for the school. We have then turned around and given the schools that option, and I know the superintendents are in favor of it. They, of course, will have to go to their elected officials and finalize this thing, but I'm hopeful that very shortly, more of these kids will get back in school, we can do an even better job of keeping our kids in school. Now, you know, when all this is over, when all this is over, people will go ahead and look at what everybody's done and what everybody didn't do, and they'll decide who did too much, and who didn't do enough, and who did just about right. And obviously, I'd love for us to be in the third category, but it's just impossible. So we have to deal with the numbers that we have now and how we understand those numbers, which, of course, brings us to the mask enforcement issue. Most recently, Jefferson County passed a mandate. The interesting thing about it, and of course, my position has always been, you know, that it's not good public policy to mandate things that you're not able to enforce. Jefferson County apparently understands that because they're, they have no penalty for not wearing a mask. St. Louis City has never had a penalty for that. Franklin County instituted one, as far as I know, they haven't charged anybody yet, and St. Louis County is basically putting it on the business people to enforce. And I guess if the business people don't do the job for them, then they get in trouble. But again, I'm not, I haven't heard of any business closures due to failure to enforce that. But as I've said from the very beginning, the mask, excuse me, the case numbers, okay, the case numbers, whatever they are, and to whatever extent mask-wearing affects them, is really the third thing that we look at? And believe me, we do look at it, but the first thing we look at is deaths. And this is the cumulative deaths per 100,000. As you can see, we're the green down there on the bottom. The dotted, the dotted red below us is the statewide average, and then up above us is St. Louis City and County and State of Illinois. You see those really kind of crazy lines in there? That's Monroe County and Jersey County over in Illinois. And I don't know how you explain what happened there, but in both those cases, there was a mandatory mask, or mask mandate in effect in those counties, but it didn't seem to have much of an effect. And so anyway, it's difficult to talk about deaths because any death is a great tragedy. But again, our death rate is too high, but not nearly as high as a lot of other places. And I say it's too high, you can see exactly where it is, it's nearly, well, it's more than twice what we were experiencing as an average on those first three months. But again, 61% are in long-term care facilities, and we have done a much better job of finding out, of figuring out how to keep people alive in that particular situation. But 41% are not. I will say, though, still, gee, 80, 90% are people over 60 years of age, and very few, I think we have one person who was 49, a few in their 50s, and just about everybody else, 60s, 70s, and 80s. So to the extent that we have encouraged people to do these things, I encourage that particular group of people even more so. The second thing we looked at after deaths was always hospitalizations, all right? And again, you know, I've had several people come and ask me, so why aren't you doing this, why aren't you doing that, why don't you do this? And I ask them, I've been asked them the last month or so, give me an example of somebody who's done a really good job of getting this under control. Another county around here in Missouri, Illinois, another state, another country in Europe, maybe, that's really done a good job, and we'll take a look at what they're doing and maybe copy it. But this thing is so widespread, but still, I'm happy to report that if you look at hospitalizations per 100,000 population, St. Charles County is 37.8, all right? If you look at the hospitalization rate for the state as a whole, it's 43.9. If you look at St. Louis County, you know, half of whose residents, excuse me, I'm sorry, that's not St. Louis County, that's the St. Louis region. The St. Louis region, half of whose members are under a mask mandate, that's 45.6, that's higher than the State of Missouri. But the real clincher for me is Illinois, which has had a mask mandate from the beginning, and their hospitalization rate is 48.6, all right? So again, 37.8 is nothing to be proud of, I wish we could make it lower, we've got to make it lower, but it's still less than what we're seeing in some other places. Now, you know, the bad news, of course, is that we don't just go to the hospitals in our county, and our county hospitals aren't just filled with people from St. Charles County. So in a sense, even though our numbers are better, the hospitals as a whole are, well, we're at 45%, that's where the region is. So if I can go ahead.
It's very overwhelming for our staff, and it's scary as we have flu season coming up, and we expect our numbers to increase as far as our patient volume every day.
My fear is that we're not going to be able to provide, you know, patients the care that they need just because we are so overwhelmed with so many people coming in.
And those are two very dedicated young ladies out at Lake St. Louis Hospital, and actually, the senator and I both visited with several of them on Friday, and, you know, I really can't say enough and thank them enough for the effort they're making, and they're just, they're overworked. The experts are afraid that their numbers are going to continue to grow, and we're going to have a real crisis situation. So my only request is those of you that are here, I know everybody has a different opinion about different things, but if anybody has a good idea, and we did talk to them about several ideas on Friday, if anybody has a good idea how county government can help the hospitals avoid the situation that we're all fearful of here, I hope that you'll include that in your remarks this evening. And Mr. Chairman, if it's, with your permission, I'd like to go ahead and give up the last three minutes of my time to Senator Onder.
Certainly. Senator.
Well, thank you, Mr. Chairman, Executive Ailment, members of the council. I think you all know me, I'm Bob Onder, State Senator, District 2, representing the western half of our fine county. You know, I think Executive Ailment covered most of what I had to say. I did want to, I did want to, he alluded to a meeting that he and I had at SSM in Lake St. Louis on Friday, and yes, we toured the emergency room and some other departments and met some really very dedicated people who are sacrificing a lot to deal with this pandemic. But we also met with Commander Garza of the St. Louis Regional Task Force, you see him a lot in the news these days, and Laura Kaiser, the CEO of SSM Health System. And I have to say that I believe Steve and I both went to that meeting hoping to see how we could all work together to move forward, move together as a region in fighting this pandemic and relieving human suffering. And I was disappointed that Commander Garza and Ms. Kaiser just wanted to talk about nothing else but mask mandates. They didn't want to talk about the studies surrounding mask efficacy, and despite the fact that masks seem to be a holy grail for some people in this so-called public health community, the data are very conflicting and honestly, not all that good. I believe in masks, I wear masks, we wear them at my medical office, but honestly, I'm doing it more on a hunch that they might do some good than this religious-like faith that you see in masks, and certainly, they're not the whole solution. You know, Commander Garza, Ms. Kaiser, again, we're just hammered on hospital capacity, hospital capacity. According to the task force this evening, I heard this on Camwax on the way home from work tonight, hospitals in our region are at 77% of capacity, ICUs are at 89% capacity. You know, I have to say, and that's serious, that's, I take that very seriously, but I want to read you some headlines from 2018. Cover of Time Magazine, "Hospitals Overwhelmed by Flu Patients Are Being Treated Intense." The Rochester, New York newspaper, "Hospital Overcrowding: Flu Worsens Effects of Hospital Crowding." "California Hospitals Face a War Zone of Flu Patients Are Setting Up Tents to Treat Them," and so on. And at the same time, Ms. Kaiser admitted that SSM was still doing profitable elective procedures even though she was predicting imminent overwhelming of capacity. More disturbing, Executive Ailment, working with his health, our health department here in St. Charles, probably suggested no fewer than a dozen possible things that we could do as a county, as a region, to fight this pandemic and treat patients. And Garza and Kaiser just shot down everyone, no, that won't work, you need a mask mandate. That won't work, you'd need a mask mandate. I was really, really disappointed. And this was, this Commander Garza, who lives in Ladue, St. Louis County, he lives in a county that has twice the death rate from COVID-19 as ours, a higher hospitalization from COVID-19 than ours. He could not tell us whether, that he could give us no empiric data that people wear masks anymore in St. Louis County than in St. Charles, he could give us no data about enforcement, and just, no, you gotta do it. It became pretty clear to me that I was dealing not with a medical scientist, but with an ideologue who had one idea in his mind and was not willing to talk about anything else. Hey, the real question is, do we believe in personal responsibility? Do we believe in the leadership that you and I and Executive Ailment exert to get people to do the right and responsible thing? Or do we believe in government coercion? And I honestly think that that's where I differ from Commander Garza and County Executive Sam Page. How are we going to get through this? At the end of the day, this is a virus. I would suggest to you, one reason we're having a few more cases in St. Louis County now than St. Louis County, is because a few months ago, St. Louis County had a lot more viruses spread, it's what viruses do. Yes, wear masks, yes, social distance, yes, stay home if you're sick, but at the end of the day, this one-size-fits-all, one-trick pony approach that Commander Garza seems to be pushing on St. Charles County, I don't think is the right one. What's going to really get us through it? Operation Warp Speed, we're going to have tens of millions of vaccines available in this country within a few short months, maybe by the end of the year. So I thank you all for your time. I just want to commend Executive Ailment on all of you for staying the course, and again, going along with what I think is the right approach, the approach Governor Parson has urged, and the approach that I believe is consistent with our values here in St. Charles County. Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, I've got a question for the doctor. Dr. Onder, we had a meeting as well with Mike Ehlum and Joe Cronin, and we were talking to hospital director locally here, and I had asked a question several times, how many patients do you have in intensive care in COVID? They said 25, okay. And now, a lot of the medical people are furloughed, is that correct?
Yeah, you know, SSM specifically furloughed about 2,000 in April.
So that is a problem.
That is a problem, and I think, you know, you lay off, you lay off a bunch of people in March and April, and you expect them to come back for the same pay in November during the height of a viral pandemic? That's a problem, I agree.
That's a problem. So the 25 people, as stated by this doctor, that's in the hospital beds locally here, and we asked several, I asked them, how many were in the hospital beds this time last year from the flu in intensive care? Circumvented a question, circumvented a question, and finally came around to it after Mrs. Lykem asked them for the first time. How many people do you? "How many people do you, that you have in 2008, 19? 25." The same number.
Yeah.
And so this number that you keep hearing, "We're overwhelmed, we're overinflated." Well, a hospital typically runs at 85 to 90% to be profitable. Is that correct?
Right. That is correct.
And so the hospitals, when you talk to them, they're at 90% in, in a flu season, which is, right now is the flu season. So how is anything different than it has been in the last several years?
And according to KAMLAX this afternoon, that number is 77%. I, I've heard the number 90% from Garza over and over again, but his own pandemic task force this afternoon said 77%. Um, it, or to put it another way, Joe, that the, when, uh, when Steve and I spoke to Garza and others at the very beginning of all this, late March, um, we asked, "How many, how many ICU beds do we have in this pandemic task force region?" The answer was about a little over 1,000. Um, the, um, "How many are in ICUs today in the whole region with COVID?" It's about 200. So about 20%. And you're right, influenza seasons can be pretty bad to hospitals. The nature of hospitals, it's that they do, they can surge to improve capacity when they, when they need to. Therapeutics have improved. Our death rates improved from COVID-19. Average length of hospitalization from COVID-19 has improved. Um, so all those things help us deal with capacity. But although I have to say, Joe, this is a little frustrating as a legislator, because I am a big proponent of repealing our certificate of need law. There is no reason a hospital should have to come to politicians to get approval for new hospital beds or to buy an MRI machine, and yet the hospital association lobbies to keep CON because they want to reduce, they want to keep away competition, they want to reduce the number of beds. I mean, we know here in SSM just downsized operate, uh, emergency room operations and closed their obstetrics ward. So, um, you know, I, I find it somewhat hypocritical that hospitals are saying, "Well, gosh, we have too many hospital beds in the region," and then the next flu season, um, they're, uh, they're, they're crying, uh, they're crying for help. Hey, it's a real problem. Don't get me wrong. I don't mean to, I don't mean to belittle it, but I would, I would say, as of Friday, Ms. Kaiser told us that, that SSM was still doing elective procedures that are more profitable than treating flu and COVID patients.
Well, that and the fact that they always talk about death rates, and the death rate actually was higher last year than it is currently right now. So there is no increase in death rates in the country.
Yeah.
And so there's some numbers that aren't adding up.
Yeah, COVID death rates are different than influenza rates, depending on which population you're looking at. Children, it's lower, and older, older, sicker folks, it's higher.
Mr. Cronin.
Yeah, Joe.
Did you read St. Louis University study?
Oh, yeah. I, yeah.
I just sent it to you.
So that was a study by the Department of Health and Social Justice, were the three primary authors, and then I think the fourth author was Commander Garza. It is impossible, it's frustrating, it is impossible to, uh, to interpret that study because, first of all, he doesn't even tell you which mask mandate, you know, the county-
It was a she, and I read it. Okay? And the thing of it is, it compared our growth of infections since July compared to the other surrounding counties. Let me finish a second. Okay? And basically, counties with mask mandates got 40% less new infections since July than other counties that don't, including ours, Franklin and Jefferson and that. Suggesting masks are wonderful. That's, in a perfect world, it'd be fine. Look around this place. Did that work very well? This place doesn't look any better than that bar you threw up on the screen. Okay? Our own public information, information, Doug Balnick comes out, and we get this on Wednesday. He says, "40% of our total cases have occurred in the last month. 8,000 new cases in this county. This thing's exploding." I have a best friend who's a VA doctor, is retired-
Right.
-in Colorado, got called back to active duty. He's working 14 hours in Denver right now, and he's telling me, "You ain't seen nothing yet, folks. It's going to get way worse." So, you know, all the medical professionals, except you, are saying, "Mask, mask, mask."
Non-sense, Joe. Okay, please. Please. That's enough. Let me say, let me say, let me say, that St. Louis U-
A little respect, please. Thank you.
That St. Louis U study is impossible to interpret because all they do is report these percentage changes. They don't tell you what day they start and what they finish.
Doctor, I went to college for six years, and I read it, and I understood it.
No, they only reported percentage changes, Joe. I understand that they asserted that there were these percentage changes, but they didn't tell you what their raw data set was that they were working off of. It's, and I've asked Garza for that, and it's not been provided to date. So if you want to talk studies, and I'm the only doctor, so the CDC's Center, uh, Journal of Emerging Diseases published an article in May of 2020. It analyzed 11 studies it thought were the best-done controlled studies of the effect on community use of masks to prevent influenza transmission. Zero for 11 studies proved efficacy. The, the best uncontrolled study on COVID was published in the Annals of Internal Medicine. By the way, Larsa's study, the SLU study, isn't even published yet, and it's not peer reviewed. So CDC's journal, the Journal of Emerging Infectious Diseases was the 11 studies, uh, the Annals of Internal Medicine, the top internal medicine journal of the study. Danish investigators randomized 3,000 people to wear masks, 3,000 not to wear masks, no difference in COVID infection rate.
Would you have surgery for a doctor without a mask?
I'm sorry?
Would you have surgery from a doctor without a mask?
Sir, inpatient is out, is different than outpatient, and surgery's different than walking through Walmart, Joe.
It's the same principle. You're trying to keep germs out of other people's organs.
And besides, Walmart already prevents, requires masks. I, I would suggest the fact that you have some non-mask wearers in this room, part of that is, um, is, is what's known as civil disobedience, Joe. And, uh, and I predict that if this council mandates masks on this state, it will be the last day some people in this county wear masks. I will continue to wear masks. I, I think, I think they may do something, but Joe, there's not a, it's not like holy writ from Mount Sinai that masks are effective as Commander Garza thinks they are.
He's a doctor, too.
Yeah, I'm a doctor, too, and so are the authors of the New England Journal of Medicine article that was a negative study, too.
Mr. Hammond.
I don't really have any questions for you. I just, uh, want to share my personal experience, since I recently got over the COVID. And it's like having, uh, if you ever had the flu, imagine the worst flu you've ever had, and double that, because that's how you're going to feel. You're going to hurt from head to toe. You're going to have difficulties, uh, eating, keeping anything down. It, it was terrible. And I'm 66, and I guess I'm lucky I survived. I didn't end up in the hospital, but I came close to going a couple of times. It's, it's no fun. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you. Let's wrap it up here. Thank you. Appreciate it. Senator. Next up is the, uh, public presentation on MoDOT's I-70 Cave Springs to Fairground Roads Design Building Project. Is that correct? Who's presenting?
Do you want to do the other stuff?
Yeah, let's go to public comment. Okay. We, we, hold on. Okay.
Do you need to ask your gentleman agenda?
No, no, we can, we can. Okay. Uh, let me, uh, let me start out by saying that we will have public comment. All right?
Do you need to send agenda, then go to public comment?
Um, I think we'll do public comment first.
Can you hear Mr.? Um, in public comment, what we will be doing is we will allow three speakers for and three speakers against on the particular topic. Once, uh, we're finished with three and three, we will alternate back and forth, okay? Then we'll move on to the next topic. We will start off with, uh, the mask mandate, uh, public comments. I have a large number of cards here, so I am going to just reach in and pick one out. Okay? Diane Dodge.
Woo-hoo! What's the topic?
Uh, this is mask mandates.
Okay.
First of all, I just want to say thank you to all of you for all your work that you do for St. Charles. I'm sure this has not been an easy time, um, to be working in the capacity that you do, and, um, so I just want to say that thank you very much for the work that you do. We really appreciate it. Um, I also want to say that I'm really thankful to live in a county that tries to care about its people through, um, the way the government acts, but also tries to represent the people who live here. In many states, and also in St. Louis, there's many of the elected leaders that are acting unilaterally. They're not getting input from the people who live there regarding their decisions about COVID-19, um, and I think that that's unfortunate. I just am so thankful for the way St. Charles County government has handled, uh, the pandemic. I love that there's the billboards that have the health advisories, and they give you, "Here's what you can do." You know, we got the postcard from, um, Mr. Ailman about, "Here's the things you can do." And, um, I think that's, um, it shows that the government is acting in a way to try to, um, suggest safety practices, um, and I think that that's the role that a government should play. I think one of the things that I guess is coming into question right now is, like, what is the role of government? I don't think anybody would question that there is a problem, there is a pandemic. It's really what is the role of government? And, um, so I, I personally feel so thankful that I live in a county that is not bowing to all the peer pressure. You know, I have a mask on right now, but it's not because you're forcing me to wear a mask, it's because I've chosen to wear one. And I just feel so thankful. I'm like, wow, I can live somewhere where I can choose to do that. Um, and, um, I also just want to say, too, that I'm really thankful that we have not had a shutdown. I think that that's really important because one day, this pandemic will end, but my concern is that the devastation from the economic shutdowns, that could affect people for who knows how long. Um, and I also know that I've been reading about even other countries that are experiencing economic devastation because of the shutdowns here in the US. Their economies are being affected, and there's people that are actually, you know, experiencing starvation and other problems because they can't work because they're dependent on our economy. Um, so there's a lot of bigger factors than just us when we make these, um, decisions about how we're going to handle, um, the pandemic. And, um, so I just want to say thank you for not succumbing or yielding, um, with either irresponsible passivity, um, or like a tyrannical micromanaging of people. I don't think that you've done either one of those, um, and I'm glad that we're operating in a way that ensures that the cure, um, is not going to be, you know, worse than, um, the pandemic itself. Um, so-
Your, your three minutes is up, Dan.
Okay. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Appreciate it.
Um, the, uh-
(applause)
The next, the next speaker in support of mask mandates is Donna Malkus. Malkus, Malkmus? Did I pronounce that correctly?
Good evening, everyone. Um, my name is Donna Malkmus. I am a teacher in Francis House School District, um, for 35 years. I'd like for you to know that, um, every day, I see about 100 kids every day, and I fight tooth and nail to make sure that my students are wearing their masks, because they're not always responsible when they wear a mask. Uh, you can look in our audience and see that there are people who wear a mask, but they don't do it responsibly. They don't have their nose covered. And so we have no idea when we walk into our school every single day what we're going to run into. Now luckily, I'm a science teacher. I teach chemistry. I religiously wash my hands after every single class, and I religiously wear my mask. But not everybody does that. And I really believe that if the St. Charles would, if our county council would at least address, not tonight, I realize you're not voting on a mask mandate, but at least look at that a little more stronger in terms of having people wear a mask, I think it would go greatly in terms of helping reduce our numbers. I have a daughter who happens to be working at St. Joseph's Hospital right now. She's in the cardiac care wing, but they switched her over to COVID. And all I want to say is, her words to me have been, "Mom, do not ever have to go to the hospital. It is really bad." What happens, Mr. Hammond, in a couple of months after you've recovered from COVID? What's going to happen? Nobody knows what the long-term effects are going to be. What if, what if, Mr. Hollander? What if you have a heart attack right now, and our hospitals are already full with all these people that have COVID, that could, could have possibly been prevented by wearing a mask and washing their hands and being socially responsible and socially distancing? What's going to happen? All, all we're asking you is just to take that in consideration, because I don't want the words, "Mom, don't go to the hospital," to ever have to make me make that decision like, "Oh, my gosh, I can't, I can't go to the hospital because there's just too many people already there. It's going to be triage. Some people are going to have to die. I hope that's not me." And I certainly hope it doesn't happen to you all. Thank you.
Thank you. Um, the next speaker would be against mask mandates would be Mary Ann Boatwright.
Disposable Mask Box states, "Will not provide protection against COVID-19 or any virus." A randomized controlled trial, considered the gold standard of 6,000 Denmark participants, one of the largest studies, showed virtually no difference in COVID infection between masked and unmasked. Lengthy mask wearing causes reduction in blood oxygenation, reduced lung function, inflammation, and reduced immunity. Cancer grows best in a low-oxygen environment. Repeated low-oxygen episodes have been proposed as a factor in atherosclerosis, heart attacks, and strokes. COVID has a 99.9% recovery rate. Thousands of people have been treated successfully with hydroxychloroquine. I find it shameful media demonized it possibly costing lives. If masks, lockdowns, social distancing were believable and worked, Newsom, Pelosi, Lightfoot, Pritzker, Whitmer, and too many more to name elite overlords wouldn't have been busted breaking their own rules. CDC quietly revised numbers after they were caught inflating them. 6% of the original numbers might be accurate. Media continues to use the inflated numbers. Many hospitals included COVID diagnosis due to the Medicare monetary incentive, $13,039 upon a ventilator. Follow the money. Mainstream media bombards us every day with new COVID numbers. We make poor decisions and are willing to give up our rights when we're afraid. Let's not be afraid. The virus is real, but I'm not sure it occurred naturally. There were a number of indictments of a Harvard professor, a few Chinese nationals, a Chinese physician that worked with US doctors on the coronavirus project in 2014 before it was shut down by DHS for being too risky. Dr. Fauci sends millions of our tax dollars to Wuhan lab to study the coronavirus after the US lab shut down. This seems curious to me. We need to expose revolutions being perpetrated on our country. We have had our freedoms stripped away with almost no resistance from government officials or Americans. Elitists and globalists are behind COVID shutdown, BLM, Antifa, anti-police riots, destruction of historical monuments, our economy in the middle class. It's time to stop the madness. We should be free to decide to wear or not wear a mask. Don't infringe on my rights. Let's celebrate diversity, diversity of opinion. My rights come from God, not man or government. My rights do not stop because someone else is afraid.
Thank you.
Thank you.
And our, our last speaker on the, uh, mask mandate against will be John Behr, B-E-H-R. John?
My name's John Behr. I live in Augusta, Missouri. Joe's my councilman. I want to echo the comments of the others that say, "We appreciate everything you guys do," and especially in a time like this where I'm sure you're bombarded with demands and information, and you don't know what to believe and what not to believe. Uh, I would like to draw your attention to something I sent to each of you today. I'm sorry I didn't get it myself until today, or I would have sent it earlier, but it is a, it's called the Great Barrington Declaration. It's only called that because they met in a town called Great Barrington, Massachusetts. A group of top epidemiologists from Harvard, Stanford, and Oxford met there. They were from varying political backgrounds, but they came together and came to the same conclusion. And I sent you an email with the highlights. This declaration is only eight paragraphs long. I'm not going to read it now, but I would encourage you to read it if you get the chance, please. But some of the highlights are, "They concluded, 'The current lockdown policies are producing devastating effects. Keeping students out of school is a grave injustice.'" Vulnerability- of school is a grave injustice. Vulnerability to death is 1,000 times higher in the old and infirm than in our children." Or if you flip that around, "Children are 1,000 times less likely to get sick or die from COVID. They're at almost zero risk. We should allow those who are at minimal risk of death to live their lives normally, to build up immunity to the virus through natural infection while better protecting those who are at highest risk." They say, "Schools and universities should be open for in-person teaching. Restaurants and other businesses should be open. Arts, music, sports, and other cultural activities should resume." This has been signed on to this declaration by 48,000 medical professional doctors, medical staff, research scientists, including, I asked Dr. Onder, I hope you don't mind me saying, he signed on to this declaration as well. So I think you guys should, like a CEO, or a mayor, or county councilman, or a governor, or our Congress in D.C., or our president, should take a very holistic view of this. And we all agree, we don't want one more death from this, but the cure cannot be worse than the disease. And we are having a horrible impact economically and on our children's educations that could last for decades to come. Lastly, if I have a couple more seconds, I want to point out, we hear a lot from teachers and the NEA, and we all want to protect our kids. I have adult kids, one's a teacher. Okay, last comment is, there's one Western country, Sweden, that did not lock down their schools during this pandemic. They let kids 1 through 15 go to daycare and to school in the height of the pandemic, and of 1.8 million kids in Sweden in that age range, zero, exactly zero died of COVID.
Our next topic is the current quarantine guidelines. There are three speakers against this particular topic, starting with Julia Lutkenhaus, please.
Good evening, everyone. I'm not new. You've seen me before. I was here in August, and I'm back again. Julia Lutkenhaus, 29-year veteran of the education field, proud to say that I teach in the Wentzville School District for the last 20 years. I am here tonight, though, to represent more than 4,000 teachers and educational support personnel in this county, in behalf of the Francis Howell Education Association, the Fort Sumal Education Association, St. Charles, Wentzville, Francis Howell ESP, which is our educational support personnel, and our St. Charles transportation people. We have a letter that we are going to read to you. Educators act out of a sense of duty to protect our students. We are morally bound to protect students' health and safety. The relaxed guidelines issued on November 12th by Missouri's Department of Elementary and Secondary Education and Governor Parson recklessly permit people exposed to COVID-19 to remain in contact with our students and our educators. At the direction of County Executive Elman, on Tuesday, November 24th, the St. Charles County Health Department delivered new guidelines to our county superintendents. When school began in the fall, the seven-day positivity rate reported for the St. Charles County Public Health was 9.5. As of Thursday, November 12th, the day the guidelines were issued, the rate had increased to 25.75. As of Friday, November 20th, it was 31.22. That's from our own county website dashboard. Infections continue to hit record highs. Now in the time to, is the time to increase our efforts to reduce the spread, not decrease them. Cases across Missouri, specifically in St. Charles County, are rising dramatically. Now is the time to invest more heavily in mitigation strategies, such as reducing class sizes to ensure physical distancing, which in Wentzville is pretty hard to do, increasing ventilation, accelerating testing and contact tracing, purchasing higher-quality PPE, and hiring additional staff to aid in our sanitation. This is especially important in schools where additional families are choosing in-person options for the second semester, which will increase our class sizes and decrease social distancing opportunities. The state's new guidance is ill-conceived and runs contrary to the guidance of the national health experts and the CDC. The CDC guidelines continue to recommend quarantine of anyone who experiences prolonged exposure to COVID-19. As asymptomatic individuals are not currently recommended to test for COVID-19, we do not have sufficient data to assert that quarantined students are not positive. We only know that they're not exhibiting symptoms. With our current protocols, these potentially asymptomatic students are quarantined beyond the window where they may be contagious. Without quarantine, the potential of asymptomatic spread dramatically increases, which puts our at-risk teachers, students in more danger because they are more likely to have serious complications. I finished. Thank you. We have known from the beginning of this crisis that we have staff and students with comorbidities that put them at increased risk from serious complications from COVID-19. Knowing that area hospitals are being pushed to capacity and even canceling some elective surgeries, we cannot responsibly change protocols that put people in danger of not having access to the care they may need if serious complications arise. We urge the leadership of the St. Charles County School Districts and the St. Charles County Department of Health to return the quarantine protocols recommended by the CDC for the safety of our students, our staff, our families, and our broader community. I found it interesting, Mr. Elman, that your quote from Mr. Lincoln said, "Pronounced decisions don't help." This pronounced decision is not helping us. Thank you.
Thank you. The next speaker is Erin Shelter. Erin?
Good evening. Can you hear me okay?
Yes.
My name is Erin Shetler, and I'm a resident of Harvester with a daughter in the Francis Howell District. I'm here because I'm scared. I'm scared for my daughter, our teachers, and our health. I'd like to read a letter I wrote to the school board last week before knowing that it was you guys who made this call to relax the quarantine rules, and I'd like to read part of it now. And then I'd like to ask a couple of questions for the record, knowing there is no mechanism for you to answer. Hello. The quarantine rules agreed upon by county officials will make it even more dangerous for our families. It is not modified quarantine. It is letting people who are quarantined by the Health Department go to school and let other people be put into danger. It's not, if it's not safe enough for a child or teacher to go to the grocery store, then it's not safe enough for them to go to school. Our positivity rate is too high for this risk, and the district should not be making health decisions that go against basic health guidelines. I know the job of a county officer and a school board member has never been more difficult. I know the quarantine rules set forth by public health and disease prevention bodies have put an extreme strain on our kids and our families and our teachers. I'm asking that our officials focus on figuring out how to make quarantined students and families more supported instead of making our schools less safe. You really don't need to imagine the scenario. As the odds say, it will happen soon. An infected but non-symptomatic student follows the district's new rules and comes to school. A teacher or student is exposed to that person, gets sick, and dies. The senator talked about the real questions. The real question for all of you is which side of the public health crisis do you want to be on when this scenario takes place? Do you want to be on the one where you can stand up and say you did everything possible to protect kids and teachers, or the one where someone dies because of a decision you made? With this positivity rate, we will all find out soon enough. Your teachers, staff, administrators, health officials, and paraprofessionals are amazing people who are literally risking their lives to come to work. The least you can do is respect them enough to make decisions that take their safety into account. Now I'd like to ask a few questions for the record because I haven't been able to find the answers. Are St. Charles County schools participating in a study involving the safety of going against county and health officials' quarantine rules? If so, have parents and teachers been notified that their families are being used in a study that could compromise their health and safety? Question two, do you agree that there will be blood on your hands when someone gets sick and dies because you decided our kids and teachers aren't good enough for basic public health? Thank you.
Thank you.
Did anybody get pissed on the mask thing? Were there people who weren't allowed to speak on the mask mandate?
This was on this topic of quarantine. So we have one more speaker.
I know, but did we limit, did everyone get, I just, did everyone have an opportunity to speak that fell out of car so far?
We had three speakers for and three speakers against on that subject. Last of all, we have Ms. Emily Wyham, okay? And this also is on the quarantine guidelines.
Oh, that's all the cars that we got?
Yeah.
All right. Hello. My name is Emily Wyham. I want to first say that the senator just said that masks don't work, and then we're supposed to send our kids to school when they're exposed because everyone should be okay because they're wearing masks. Everybody heard that, right?
Yeah.
Okay, I just want to make sure I'm not crazy. Okay. I'm just going to read my letter that I sent to all you guys already, but it's, okay. I'm going to be honest. It's taken me a long, it's taken me a couple days to send this email because I really wasn't sure how much my voice would matter when it's so very clear that changing the quarantine guidelines is so very wrong. Those in charge have to know how wrong it is. So I'm not sure how anything I can say could possibly make a difference. I have to try, though. Loosening the quarantine guidelines when hospitals are full just makes absolutely no sense. What the district is doing now is working fairly well, honestly better than many people expected. The district needs to keep doing exactly what they are doing now to keep the numbers from getting worse. Changing the quarantine guidelines could very well end up causing so many more cases that the district, my district in particular, Francis Howell, would end up going all virtual. This would be a great hardship for single parents, families with both parents working, and children who really need in-person school to receive services and therapies. Changing the rules midsemester isn't fair to students going in person. The parents signed up for their kids to go to school in person, being told that if someone is exposed, they would be quarantined. It isn't fair to change the rules in the middle of a semester when parents can't change to virtual. It absolutely isn't fair to teachers and staff who signed up to teach and work for the year, being told exposed students, teachers, and staff would be quarantined. It isn't as if teachers can just quit when they don't feel safe. They have house payments, rent, car payments, need insurance, et cetera. Many teachers I've spoken to feel trapped. They love their job, they love their students, but they also don't want to get sick or die. I also have on my sign a poll done by the members of a Francis Howell Parents Support Group, and the vast majority of parents polled did not want the quarantine guidelines changed. Hold up. It's 400. Can you read that for me, Brian? Can somebody read that?
41115.
Yeah, 400 people did not want the guidelines changed. 115 wanted them to change.
Thank you, ma'am.
Thank you very much.
Claire?
I have two more speakers.
Two more speakers. Mr. Deanoff?
No.
One more time. Just give me a moment.
Thank you very much, Mr. Chairman, members of council. My name is Arne C. AC Deanoff, county public advocate and resident. The first thing I'd like to say is I'd like to take County Executive Elman up on his recommendation to stop the spread. I'm asking for a larger meeting venue, Mr. County Executive, and Joanne Lycom, the Director of Administration, to comply with Chapter 610 calls for reasonable meeting accommodations for the expected crowd. Residents were blocked out, as we see, I believe, at least some residents out in the hallway. We need to at least adhere to some of the guidelines, six to 10 foot away if people aren't going to wear a mask. I get it, some people choose to wear a mask and some don't. But my question was, was Demetrius Chapman forced into agreeing with the decision of Steve Elman? Did Director Chapman have another recommendation? Was it rejected, and was Director Chapman forced into signing off? I've heard nothing but crickets from our Health Director, Chapman. Now moving on to other matters on the agenda. $62 to $70 million project on I-70 from Fairgrounds to K Springs. What will we achieve for that money? What will we get for our return on investment? $10 million of our half-cent sales tax money is going to this project, $8 million loan to MoDOT when it's not even our road. We don't own that roadway. MoDOT does, the state does. Do we forget about the Wentzville Curve, the I-70 Curve project? What about the Point Prairie Bridge project to nowhere that's sitting idly by, collecting dust and rotting? What about the rest of the county and municipal projects? That leaves another $8 million left over this year in 2021. Is the $1.1 million going to fix and solve our 911 dom problem back in October? Why are we paying another $2.4 million in new radios for police? Another $1.7 million for module car radio upgrades? We just bought those radios brand-new to the tune of another sales tax that voters approved less than five years ago, and now we're turning around and spending millions of dollars again, close to $4 million in new radios. When are we going to have Motorola is going to step up to the plate and pay for their mistake that we paid millions of dollars, close to $25 million in the tower system? I question the spending of $3.8 million on rural-side leaning development. Is now the time during COVID? What are economic expectations? How can we, how can you and we realistically and knowingly use $4 million on a Skyway walk from the Justice Center to the county courthouse? How can you, the council, spend $2 million in administrative center upgrades with care funds from the federal government? How can you spend $4.5 million in Health Department upgrades? Our election equipment, and I'll just sum it up, our election equipment is in contention with one sole bid from Henry Atkins &amp; Sons. That's a cozy relationship the county has. And finally, I urge you to pass Bill Number 4897, several lean development sections for water control. We need this ordinance for accountability of water, flooding, erosion, and water control. Stop watering down and taking the teeth out of this bill and making amendments, and I ask you to pay it as presented by a professional planning staff and community development director. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
I believe we have one more speaker.
Mr. Chairman, my point was, is we had three pros for quarantine, and there are people who speak out cars that did not have the opportunity to speak. So I would, I would think it would be okay if it's our with the chairman and the council to give those three spots to people who drove, spent the time, who drove, drive in here, participated in county government. That's what my point was. Because there are people who have not been able to speak that did come down here to speak about certain subjects.
I believe the subject has been covered as completely as we possibly can.
But not to both sides, pro and con. We require both sides. We did not allow both sides. I mean, isn't the objective is to have people participate in the voice of what's going on in their county government?
Which object?
We had three people speak against mask mandates.
That is correct.
So we, same thing there.
I don't see any problem. I think we've heard this discussion.
Well, just shut them down, right? Don't let them talk. They drove all the way out here.
The point, the point I'm trying to make is that, number one, this was not an agenda item. We passed a number of months ago a resolution that says that it is not on the agenda. We should not allow speakers at all. Obviously, as Obviously, as chairman, I overlooked that particular rule that we imposed, and we allowed speakers on the anti-mask mandate. At this point, I feel that the subject has been exhausted, and I feel it's time for us to move on. Claire?
Brenda Webb.
I'm sorry, go ahead.
Claire, any other speakers?
Okay, my name is Brenda Webb. I'm a citizen, and I'm actually here, although my sentiments, very strong sentiments for the, a lot of our friends that spoke, but I understand that you had, or I heard that you had passed or agreed to take a grant a couple of meetings ago for voting machines, and the grant was from, you know, a group that Mark Zuckerberg is from, and I just wanted to express my really deep concerns about taking that grant. I've been reading all kinds of things. Of course, we've been hearing all about voting machines and irregularities and things being flipped and changed and all of that kind of thing. But there are also, from what I understand, there are several lawsuits over those grants, you know, and accusations about affecting the elections, you know, interfering with elections. And I just would really like you to consider that and dig into that before you even spend all that money, because it's a really serious thing if somehow something gets in. As you and I both all know, or all of you know, nothing in this world is free, and, you know, there's no such thing as no strings attached. And so I would just really urge you to take a really close look at that and look at some of the lawsuits that are out there, if that's, you know, if that's really what it is, and what their complaints are, before we get too involved in this. So, thank you very much. Thank you for standing strong for freedom as well, and we appreciate it.
Okay, I believe now it's time for a public presentation, or do we want to do the consent agenda next?
We do the consent agenda and then...
I think Amanda's ready. She's been waiting.
Let's...
Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
Yeah, I see some people are leaving. I mean, we're pretty much through with this part of the meeting.
Yeah, we are. At this point, yeah, we're, thank you for your attendance.
Will you know how to clear out a phone?
Don't take it personal. Joe's in the door.
Eat lemons. Eat lemons.
I don't know, Dave. I think you're pretty sour all day.
I don't get it.
All right.
You can always put it in there, too.
I believe we will go with the MoDOT I-70 Cave Springs design building project, and Amanda, I know you've been waiting, and we appreciate your patience.
All right, so we have a presentation from MoDOT. They are virtually online, but this presentation is actually recorded from the road board meeting last week, just to make it a little more seamless. So they did a great job there. We're just going to play the presentation, and they will be online to answer questions if needed at the end. So this is Stacy Smith. She is the project director for the MoDOT I-70 design build from Cave Springs to Fairgrounds Road.
Cave Springs to Fairgrounds design build project. I did hear those public comments, and I got them in an email earlier today, so I'll try to hit them as I'm going through this presentation as well. I'll give you an overview of the project, the project goals, and the schedule, and what you can expect to see next. So, this project is in eastern St. Charles County, picking up where the Fifth Street interchange kind of left off at Fairgrounds, and then all the way west four miles to Cave Springs Truman interchange. So this interstate is one of the oldest in the country, and so while it's been, we've spent money here and we've upgraded it, there's never really been an opportunity to give a set of fresh eyes on the corridor and see what we could improve to the corridor as a whole, not just the interstate. There's a lot of room for improvement here. There's opportunities to increase traffic flow and get those congested interchanges moving, moving better and more safely. So we're doing this design build, and what does that mean? So a standard MoDOT project is, we call it design bid build, where we produce 100% of the plans. Plans go out for bid, contractors bid on it, low bid wins, contractor builds the project, and we inspect it. We've done about 15 projects now statewide, design build, starting with the I-64 project in St. Louis County and city, and this is where, rather than just a competition on the lowest bid on the design, we actually lump design and construction into a single contract, and they compete on both the design and the construction. And so in our design build history, like on the page Phase 3, 364 project, we can really get some innovation and some good ideas from around the country, sometimes around the world, brought to the state of Missouri. So this delivery method, design build, leverages private sector innovation to build on those conceptual designs through a competitive process. So this can result in faster construction with those two, design and construction, working together. This definitely promotes innovation as teams sharpen their pencils and really drive the competition and bring us a lot of innovation. This can actually maximize our federal funds. So to the federal funds point, 80% of the, we do an 80/20 match on our most, almost all of our projects, and so, but when it's design build, we're actually eligible for an extra 5% front. So that would be 85% federal funds and 20%, 15%, sorry, state funds. So that's maximizing our federal funds, and then also working together on a project team like this can improve the quality of the final product. So we've seen great success with design build. These are just the projects that are in the St. Louis area, starting with the new I-64 project, three of them, the Boone Bridge, Page Phase 3, and the Safety Design Build project, were all in St. Charles County. 270 is well on its way to being another great success in North St. Louis County. And then so I'm looking forward to guiding the I-70 Cave Springs to Fairgrounds project right in with those other five for our district and for your county. So as a design build project, the competition is on the design and the construction, so I don't have designs to show you, and I can't tell you what will be built. We're going to let the competition take it that way and let the experts from around the country bring us their great ideas. But so the way we guide these projects, then, is we come up with design build project goals, and I'm going to present to you our five project goals, which are high-level measurable goals that we set the vision for the entire project. They are prioritized so that they can help us aid when making decisions on the project. We use them throughout project development, so we're already, the team's already using them to craft the contract documents and the request for proposals. We use them during procurement in the spring and then through design and construction of the project. So these will guide our team for the next three years. We develop them, working closely with representatives from MoDOT as well as St. Charles County. Amanda was in on this, and John Greifseu, City of St. Charles, and the City of St. Peters. And then as a final step, they have to be approved by MoDOT senior management. Our five goals start with maximize improvements within the program budget of $62 million. So most of that, $42 million, is from St. Louis district funds, plus a few million from, to cover preliminary engineering costs. Then we have, as has been said, we're grateful for a $10 million cost share from you all, which then brought us $10 million from MoDOT statewide budget. For a total of $62 million, which does include federal, state, and county dollars, MoDOT's funds would be that 80/20 or 85/15 match, which we have applied for the extra 5%, but have not been granted that yet. Goal number two, improve safety and efficiency of the transportation network while supporting connectivity for the local community. So this is not an I-70 interstate project. This is a corridor network project. The goal is not to get people from the Missouri River out to Warrenton as fast as possible. This is not focused on the interstate. This is focused on, within these four miles, there's a lot of congestion at the interchanges, at the crossroads, on the outer roads. What can we do to improve those? Because the current configuration really is no longer enough for the growth that you all see here and in other areas. And then there's an opportunity here to revamp the outer road system, make it more complete, and make it more of a system. Goal number three, to provide a durable and maintainable transportation infrastructure that allows for future expansion. All the innovation and the good ideas that come for goal number two, we can't do those without an eye towards delivering them in a long-lasting manner that our forces can maintain easily. We also need to think about long-term in the future, when I-70 does need to be improved for greater capacity. It's important that anything we do on this project allows for future expansion. Goal number four, minimize impacts to the traveling public during construction while safely delivering the project by November 1st, 2023. So as your resident said, there's great concern what happens during construction, of course. There's ways we can keep the public updated, keep them aware of what can be, they can expect as they drive through the work zone, let them know when to avoid the work zone completely. We can use emails, social media, and website updates, put notices up on our message boards. We can also encourage the contractor and designer, as part of the competition, to find ways to design and construct the project improvements that minimize the number of lane closures or traffic backups or other impacts. Then the last but not least is goal number five, to deliver the project using a diverse workforce. So we have, we live and work in a diverse region, and the people that we work with, the people we hire, and the businesses we partner with need to reflect that. So the DVE goals for this project are 20% professional services and 14% construction activities. And we have federal workforce goals for 14.7% minority and 6.9% female, and we're in the process of determining the inappropriate on-the-job training goal. So those are our five goals, to maximize improvements for the budget, to look at the network as a whole and improve the efficiency and the safety, as well as the local connectivity in the area, to do that with an eye towards longevity and future expansion, to do that safely and with minimizing impacts during construction, and lastly, to do that in a way that values diversity, both in the businesses and the people. The schedule, we started, we completed a conceptual report last year. Then in June, we got official approval from the Missouri Commission, the MoDOT Commission, to take this as a design build project. That's a requirement of our design build processes. Then in August, we established our project team, and since then, I've been working hard on those contract documents for the design build competition. Then moving into the future, in December, we'll have an industry kickoff meeting as well as a public outreach meeting in early December. Then we move into the confidential phase next spring, where we use those goals and the work we've done and the comments we've collected to guide the industry teams as they craft their confidential proposals. Then we'll score those at the end, and then in June, we intend to award this project at the early June Commission, MoDOT Commission meeting. Design, final designs will start soon after that, with construction beginning as early as fall of next year, with an anticipated completion date of the end of 2023. So what can you expect next? After those December meetings, which you're welcome to participate in, we, my project team will go effectively silent from the beginning of February or late January to early June when we award the project, and that's to protect the integrity of that competition and increase the value that we get out of this process. Once we award the project and execute a contract, then we can come back out to the elected officials and the public and showcase what the best value proposal was. So how can you learn more? Like I said, there's that, keep an eye out for more information about the open house in early December. We're targeting December 8th. Then you can sign up for our email distribution by sending an email to my team's email at I-70CSFG, which stands for Cave Springs Fairgrounds, at mo dot mo dot gov, and feel free to invite us to present to your organization. With that, I appreciate this opportunity. I look forward to hearing your comments. Either send them to the team email address that's here, or attend our public meeting in early December and share them there. I want to know what's important to the community, and we're working closely with Amanda to get some of that, but please feel free to send me your questions and comments, and I'll answer as many as you have time for now.
Okay.
She can't, they are on the phone, hopefully.
Ms. Crone?
$62 million bucks, $7 million in power tax. Here's money going to a MoDOT road, and I don't see any much mention about what kind of percentage of increased capacity we're going to get out of that. What is the, what is the expected increase of capacity or traffic reduction from, we're getting out of that 62 million bucks? Okay?
Did you hear that?
Say it again louder? Or should you hear that?
What's the expected capacity improvements?
Yes.
Yes.
I don't really answer to that off the top of my head. I'm sorry. I can get back. If you tell Amanda knows who you are, and I can get that information for you.
Yeah, we have, so, there's a conceptual proposal that has all kinds of measures of effectiveness, is what we call it in the traffic world. So they did an incredible job improving the efficiency of the system in that, in that concept, which is not what will be built, but it, what will be built will be measured against that. So we do foresee a big improvement in efficiency, and it may be more at the interchanges, like she said in her presentation, we're very focused on the interchanges as opposed to the main line. The main line doesn't really operate that poorly in this area. It's definitely more of the Cave Springs Zumbell interchanges and then the lack of outer roads. If we are able to complete the outer road system and have that connectivity for local trips, that'll keep people off of the interstate and make it that much better.
I saw the five goals, like the average taxpayer is paying for those. Less traffic, more capacity. If you have to work on time quicker, we'll get to shopping quicker. So I mean, I would hope that's a goal of the project as well.
Oh, yes. Improved travel times, all of those things, yes. We will look at that.
Amanda?
Yep.
Chairman?
No question.
Yeah, I mean, the obvious answer to that question is where there's not a service road at all, now there will be one, so that's, that's the easiest, obvious additional capacity. But I mean, we'll be looking at things like maybe from, from Zumbell out to Cave Springs going from three lanes to four?
We aren't, Tracy, or Stacy, you can go ahead and say that if you want.
I assume he's asking about the interstate. This, this money is focused on where the problems are right now, and as, as Amanda said, the problems are those interchanges. We're backing up onto the highway, you're waiting so long at those signals to turn left or even just to go straight, and that needs to be fixed, and that's where this money is going to go. It's going to go where more money to where more problems are, right? We don't have enough money to do all of everything we'd like to do here, and so it's going to be a risk-based or a problems-based analysis of where that money goes. So as Amanda said, the interstate is functioning much better than those interchanges, and so I don't foresee spending a lot of money on the interstate. However, in my presentation, goal number three... However, in my presentation, goal number three, I believe, is let's, let's look for future compatibility. So I don't want to do all these improvements, and then 10 years down the road, we need to widen the highway, and we have to tear out everything I just did in 2021, right? So that's.
I, I don't understand. What's the problem with widening the highway?
Purpose, go ahead.
We don't have enough money to do everything right now, and the, the, money can be better spent, because the highway isn't, there isn't a capacity issue on the highway today. There may be in 10 years. So what they propose to do is to build it to later be able to be added, have that lane added. That fourth lane will be compatible with any design.
Well, the thing that we looked at, there's a fourth lane, we add past Cave Springs, and then where you can get off and take a, isn't that in it?
Probably an auxiliary lane in that.
That's in it, right?
I don't think it's all the way.
That's an extra fourth lane.
Yeah, there's, yes, there's widening on the interstate.
But what's she talking about then?
Well, it's, we don't know what concepts we're going to get, and so it's not, it's not a continuous fourth lane in that, in that concept.
So Amanda, what you, I think what you're saying is, Steve, is you're going to get, you're, you put on RFP, right?
Yes.
So they will, if, if someone does not propose a fourth lane, then the executive can choose not to go with them. Is that what you're saying?
Well, the scoring team can choose not to go with them.
Well, yeah, but I mean, that's, that's part of the plan. You just say, okay, you're going to do this for whatever, 100 million or whatever the numbers are.
Yes.
And this one has a fourth lane, and then this one's at 80 million with three lanes. So that's kind of how it's going to work.
But I'm, and I'm just, the concept that he's seen, the fourth lane is, and it's between interchanges. It doesn't go the complete way through. It just goes between Cave Springs and Zumbell, and then Cave Springs to 370. So it's not a continuous fourth lane, and that's what Stacy's referring to, if that makes sense.
I don't know, I've never talked to any of these people about any of this. So I don't know, I don't, I don't have, I don't know where they're coming from on some of this.
Okay.
I think, Amanda, it's going to be very important, especially to some of us that's been here a while, that, that it has more capacity, because we're not spending that kind of money without more capacity. Joe, isn't that what you're saying, basically? And I think that's what Stacy's saying, too, yeah. I'll give you an example. My number-one constituent in my district, I've been married to you for 35 years, okay? And she, we drive Salt River Road all the time.
Yes.
All that work that corrupt construction, did their arrowhead, okay? We look at that, and they spent a lot of money moving utilities and widening stuff, and then they put concrete islands into the damn thing, all over. She says, what the hell are they doing there? There's no increased capacity, it's been torqued for a year, all that money's spent. That's my concern with this project, okay? Now, out in O'Fallon with that outer road project, after people got used to that, that's working pretty good. But if I'm not mistaken, we added at least one lane out in O'Fallon, did you not?
It's, again, it's, well, no, we actually took auxiliary lane away, so they did not add any, any mainline capacity out there.
I don't care if you do it with lanes or improvements like you did in O'Fallon, but I would like to see a reduction in traffic and in caprice and capacity.
It will 100% improve the efficiency of the network, the whole network, yes.
One of the things I'd like to point out, Amanda, is I live in this area, okay? I probably have the I-70, Cave Springs, Mexico Road, maybe five times a week. There is nothing more screwed up in St. Charles County than that particular area. And hopefully, that will alleviate some problems, this project will.
Yes, and that's one of the goals, is eliminating the, some of those signals, eliminating some of those signal phases, so that you can get through that interchange much more efficiently, north-south, even.
They've got one, one outer road there that you can't, can't go straight on, you have to go, you have to go right.
Right.
Okay, well, yes, thank you.
And I agree 100%. And again, you think that MODOC would have fixed this stuff on their own a long time ago, but no, they made us wait in St. Charles County. They had to do 270 first, and yeah, you're right, we're putting money in the project, and they're sitting there telling us what we need. I think they ought to be doing a little bit more listening.
Is there any other questions or comments for Amanda or Stacy?
The only thing I wish, I thank you guys from MODOC for doing the job that you do with the funds that you've got. It's a shame that the senator took a run out the door, because we were going to hit him up pretty hard for a fuel tax increase on your behalf, okay?
Thank you, we appreciate that.
All right.
Thank you, guys.
Thank you, Amanda, appreciate it.
All right.
Okay, next on the agenda is the consent agenda. Do I have a motion to approve the consent agenda?
Mr. Chair.
Yes.
I would like to remove an item for discussion, but in courtesy to, to Councilwoman Snyder, she wants to vote on it. So I would just like to talk about it, and then go ahead and do a vote on it, okay?
You're welcome to talk right now.
I'd like to, I'd like to talk about the Riverside Park. And if the folks in the back room were able to pull up Ryan's presentation, I'd like to take a look at the picture of that park. It showed like an aerial, the whole area. And I'll tell you what my concerns are, besides being a fact that it's 3.8 million bucks, okay? And I know it's going to flood, you know, every few years, and you're going to have, like, all the plantings of the trees are probably going to have to be redone, got a whole lot of muck and yuck, okay? The other thing I'm concerned about is I use that park a fair amount, and the primary use of that park is for boats right now, people boating on the river. If you look at the aerial, if they can pull up the aerial on the parks project, the parks presentation you did, you'll see about 2/3 to 3/4 of that park is going to be camper parking, okay? And 3.8 million bucks, at least half of that's going to go to campers, that's like $100,000 per campsite. My question is this, I think that, and also being a boater, and being, having a camper as well, right now, you can pull your boat down there, and you can just pull through, you don't have to worry about anything. The way he's got that designed, and I guess they can't find that, but the way it's designed, every boat trailer is going to have to back into a slot. You know the picture I'm talking about, Ryan?
That one?
Yeah, that one, okay? If you look at that, every one of those boat trailers on the far right are going to have to back into the slot, which that, anybody backs up a lot of stuff, tell you that's a pain in the butt. And then probably 2/3 of the park is, is campgrounds. And I really don't, I think the campground is a losing proposition, because you're going to have a lot of maintenance with, every time those trees flood, they're going to die, the utilities are going to get flooded, that storm, sewer detention, that's, are the, I'm sorry, the sewer dump pit is going to have to be pumped, it's going to be dumped, it's going to pop out of the ground. And I think what people really want for that park, more than a campground, at least for county, is a place to park, to drop their boat in, okay? And park their trailer. So to be frank with you, I don't see the benefit of 3.8 million bucks when most of it's going to the campground, when the actual county citizens are going to use that park, probably going to be more like the guys on the top of that screen with boat trailers, okay? That's, how did, you know, how do we determine that we need 18 camp spots there, to eat up most of the park?
I apologize, I missed some of it as I was walking out, but I think I got the majority of it there. So we have, you know, looked at this for a while now, and obviously, it's going to flood, and there's going to be maintenance issues. You know, being on the river, we were aware of that. We designed this to be resistant to those sorts of conditions, planting in trees that are resistant to flooding. You know, obviously, with the utilities and things, the campground, the hookups for the RV spots are designed to be removed. So in this spot, we have about a two-day minimum window of when the water starts rising to be able to go in there and, and do the things that we need to do to ensure that the park is protected during a flood. So within those days, we'll be able to remove the, the, the hookups, they self-seal over the top of them. We'll be able to, you know, pump out the septic tank, fill it with water, so it, it doesn't have that buoyancy to float up and out. So we're aware of those issues, and we've designed this to, to cope with those issues. The, the boat parking and those, that, you're, you're concerned with that, our designers have ran traffic studies on this, you know, showing the, the ability to go in and go out on it. This was their recommendation on how to get, you know, to develop that parking lot. So that's how we got to this design. It is going to have a new boat ramp access to it. I mean, there is one there, actually, there's like two old ones that don't get used, and, and a one, existing one that, that is, that is used. You know, it will have an improved boat access, ADA accessibility, to allow people to get on a boat, you know, from there. So there's some, you know, some improvements to that boat ramp that people will be using.
I've been to probably 30, 30 different parks in the last two years, me and my wife do a lot of camping and do a lot of boating, okay? Most national parks, a lot of them don't even have campgrounds with facilities like that. They've got primitive camping, a whole lot cheaper to do. The other thing is they'll charge, they'll get, you'll get a premium, pay a premium at some places for pull-through parking. I don't see any pull-through parking. That doesn't, on that first RV in the center of the picture, in the center right, you play hell getting that RV backed into that slot, okay? I've, I've driven trucks and trailers my whole life as an equipment dealer. I mean, what you have right now, okay, for a guy like me that pulls a trailer camper, is preferable to that design. It's a whole lot easier with pull-through parking, and there's no pull-through parking in that whole project. So I'm sorry, and I understand, this is Nancy called me today, and it's her district, it's important to her, but I see that's going to be a total mess when that floods. All that grass will be dead, most of those trees will be dead, and if you just leave the thing the way it is, and put new boat docks in and cater to boaters, I think you'd do a lot better job for the citizens of this county. That's my piece, and with that, I'll let, we'll go to vote, okay?
Did you want, no, go ahead. I was just going to say, I don't have an RV, and I don't fish.
But we bought that piece of property down there a couple of years ago, and it is just sitting there vacant with no use on it. It looks terrible. I think this is the best use for it, because you've got people who want to come down there, bring their boats, maybe camp, they want to fish, they want a boat, they want to go up and down, there are several places they can go. I understand that there are some things that have been done to improve the, the flooding situation. I know at one point, when I first went down there, you were talking about it putting aggregate there. Now I understand you're putting concrete down there, which is going to be more easily maintained and better use made of it. So, I mean, I don't know about, you know, backing in RVs or anything like that, but I'm hoping that we can go ahead and proceed with this, because I think it would be an addition and a benefit to our park system.
Mr. Hammond first, and then we'll get you to talk.
Well, I support the RV park. I think it's a great concept, and I don't have a problem backing my trailer, and it's in one of those slots. But, I mean, I, I lease a lot every year, and I'd be surprised if this doesn't sell out, that you have to plan a year ahead to get one of those RV locations. So I'm, I'm in support of the RV park for sure.
Mr. Russell.
Well, you guys are talking to the guy who built an RV park. We asked one down in southwest St. Charles County, and I opened it this year, and this was 100% booked every weekend. So as much as I hate to see government competing against capitalism, it will work. So the question is, is, is a couple of things, is, is it going to have a price point equal to the people who put their own money into campgrounds and take the risk? And also, at what point do we continue competing against private money and private investors? I mean, it's a, it's a, it's a philosophical thing. I talked to Ryan about this, and I do think it's a great idea. There's no question about it's going to, it's going, Joe, it's going to work, I guarantee it. Camping is, you guys all know that the outdoor activity has just skyrocketed, and it's probably going to continue. You couldn't rent a bike in the fines, you couldn't rent a, I, I, my canoe business was, every weekend was packed, and the campgrounds are packed. And they talk to me about some of the stuff they're doing, pumping out septics and stuff, yeah, it's expensive, but you, you charge for that. You guys aren't going to be full-service, so you don't have the water.
No, no.
Yeah, and so, and so this will work, and it floods, sure it floods. Every campground around here is in a flood plain, hell, 370 isn't a huge flood plain, and they're, they're packed all the time, too. And once it gets going, it'll be packed on the weekends. So you got to ask yourself, is that what we want with our parks? Do we want our parks to be used? And yes, it would be mostly people from not around here, but is that, isn't that a good thing? I, I would think. I mean, but you'd be surprised how many people I get on my campground from St. Charles County, it's unbelievable. I go, where are you from? I'm from O'Fallon, oh my goodness, okay. Our first camp it was from Baltimore, Maryland, though.
There you go.
First weekend.
That park is getting used. John, John Bryce, who sent me pictures, I'd been down there a couple of times, there was nobody down there. But John sent me some pictures from the summer, where that parking lot was pretty well full with boat trailers, okay?
It gets used with boat trailers, Joe.
But there's not that many boat trailer parking spots. There's more boat trailers in some of those pictures John sent me.
There's a little bit that's missing from that image, that's what I'm saying.
And then a question I have for you, did you spend 3.8 million dollars in your camp?
No, I, how many sites, how many sites you have?
There's, I believe there's 25, 20?
It says 18 in the docs.
There's no question, the private development is always a lot cheaper than government, and that's just the way it is. And, and so I, I was a lot cheaper than that, but, but it's just, that's just, I didn't have hard services, though. I use gravel, and there's certain things that I did that you could or could not do, but I think that, no, I, I think it's a great idea.
Aside from, aside from the camping, we're also making some improvements to the site itself, making, you know, it more accessible for shoreline fishing.
But Ryan, that 3.8, that 3.8, that's a budget, that's not a hard bid, right?
Correct, I mean, not to exceed.
So you, you, you're going to do, this is going to be designed professionally and then competitively bid, right? Is that right?
This is where we've designed it, this is the bid, so we went out to bid, we got, we received five bids.
Oh, you already got the bids, then?
So KCI is, who are recommending awarding the construction contract to. So if it gets approved here, we'll be able to roll with it and start construction.
Well, I mean, as far as parks go, our Parks Department does a great job, and this will be used. You just got to ask yourself, is this what we want with the parks? I think it's a great idea.
I just have one.
Nancy, last comment.
Yeah, I just want, last comment. I wonder if this is going to comply with the proposed post-construction stormwater management ordinance that we're looking at. Just saying.
They won't have to follow, this is kind of going, they don't follow.
Not prepared to talk about that one.
Mr. County.
I thought that was a softball.
Mr. County.
Some, some, some trees die and others don't, right? In a flood?
Yeah, some are more resistant than others.
I really don't know, it just seems that way. You know, Joe, I mean.
I live, I live a mile upstream from this, okay?
Yeah.
And I'd say small trees will die, big mature cons will, will survive through it, some other stuff like swamp oats and that. But I'll tell you, the other problem you've got is, unless you treat the hell out of that water, nobody will drink it. That water will be full of iron and sulfur, okay? Literally, my mom got mad at me when I lived down there, because my, my toenails turned brown, like the wall or this, from the iron in the damn water. So I mean, that's my, my concern, is that it's going to be, have a lot of operational costs for, for 18 lots, okay? It's a beautiful spot, and Nancy deserves a park in her district.
I do deserve a park.
And then the last.
I got Banger Island, I mean, what the heck?
The last thing I'd like to see.
That's not even in your district.
Oh, Banger, is it? Oh, I thought it was on the edge of mine. Oh, okay, you got Banger, sorry. I will not trade you.
If you'll pleasure me for one more thing. Last meeting, I sent one of these out, Donna remembered and printed it out. This was a, a document that Corey Beckstrom-Miller did about design-build process when we did the EOC. And that process worked great for the EOC, everybody's happy with that building, worked wonderful. I saw that the 70 projects, 62 million dollar projects, design-build, too. Me and John, if you guys should have had the discussion, I'd like to see you think about a design. You've got $23 million worth of projects for next year with parks. How much could we save by doing a lot of those design builds?
Yeah, we've been talking about that, at least pulling out some aspects of the design for design-build type.
Okay.
So yeah, it's something that we've been looking at.
I'd appreciate you continuing that discussion with them.
The playground that we're proposing at ICC is sort of that design-build concept, so yeah.
Okay.
Thank you, Ron. Mr. Eland, you got one?
I appreciate the discussion, I make a motion to approve this agenda.
Second.
Okay, all those in favor of approving the consent agenda, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
I would like to vote to approve the consent agenda of the Dr. Parks, I have the ability to do that, so.
Okay. Thank you. All right, now, we do have an item that was removed from the consent agenda at our last meeting, which was three weeks ago, and that is the election authority of VT Freedom Vote Tablets. Is there anyone that would like to bring that off the table?
I make a motion to pull that off and put it back on the table.
Second. Okay, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Okay, opposed? Okay, we are now in discussion of the election authority of vote tablets, okay? Mr. Barr? Questions?
I have some, I have some comments.
Okay.
As you guys know, my concern about taking money from Mark Zuckerberg is a big problem with me. But if you want to set that aside, we got other issues. We have multiple lawsuits, we have multiple questions on voting machines that are brought into this country from foreign countries. As you know now, there's tons of issues right now with voter fraud, without, with mistakes with voting. And I asked some questions to Mr. Barr on specific questions about these particular voting machines, one in which I asked, the concern this, that Mr. Cronin brought to me, is that this is a company in the South China Sea in Malaysia, and it's the parent company. Now, I work for a big company, I work for RPM, Public Powder Metals, and they own nuclear chemicals, Rustonian, Trimco, DAPCOX, all kinds of different companies, $5 billion a year company. I could call the president of RPM, or I could call anybody in RPM, the parent company, and I can get any kind of literature, any kind of paperwork, any kind of documentation that I need. I asked Mr. Barr some questions. I asked Mr. Barr some questions about the parent company, and I asked him, he gave me a lot, I wanted another explanation of what their involvement is, is the Malaysian company in the South China Sea, and nobody signed the letter he sent us, I don't know if he sent it to anybody else, but nobody signed it. And then I asked him, I said, well, nobody's, I said, the letter of explanation sent to you is not adequate, no one signed it. Who's it from? Should the parent company be given the explanation? And then his answer was, as you can see, forwarded email, it came from the president of Atkins. Well, I couldn't see that, 'cause it wasn't signed. I don't think we need a parent company to answer what our vendor can answer. We have, I've had a long relationship, and I trust what he says. And then I responded, I don't care who you trust, I'm asking you fact-based information. I don't wanna know who, what his relationship is, I wanna know more about the parent company who owns this or is responsible. If you're a parent company, you own the sister company, that's just how it works. This company's based out of California, so, they're basically a vendor for this parent company, or you could, they're a distributor or whatever, but the questions, there's multiple ones on here, I just wasn't getting the answers that I thought would be, and then I said, what about the Zuckerberg grant? And he didn't think that, he says, the stipulations of the grant were in a packet that was presented to Council President. It wasn't a Zuckerberg grant, although he did give 80% of the money for the grant, and that's a problem. And what is his, what is Zuckerberg's objectives? Why is he giving a conservative Republican county, one of the most conservative counties in the state of Missouri, 300 and something, 300, what was it, no, 600, what the hell, 670 something thousand dollars?
667, yes.
Yeah, and so, my point is, is we don't know enough to buy this stuff. I will not put my name on this, and Mr. Barr says, well, it's, it's free money, or whatever it says, it's money that we never had, it's money that we don't have to pull out of our taxpayers. Well, I'll tell you what, I'd rather spend millions of dollars on, on equipment that we know for certain has not been contaminated, rather than get free money from someone like Zuckerberg and buying on something that may have a, may be bad or may not be bad, and that's just, that's what I'm going with.
Mr. Cronin.
I'd like to apologize for Kurt for bringing this all up, but let me just, okay, because you do a hell of a job, and I appreciate it. I'd like to put Kurt in the same position we have with the radio system, okay? Same analogy here. I didn't vote for this originally when Rich Krismer put it in, because I didn't like the fact that the company was foreign-owned, okay? That being said, it'd be like, we didn't, somebody didn't like Motorola for the radio system. Once you commit to a vendor for your system, you gotta stay with that system. We can't buy radios for the police officers, like we are tonight, from non-Motora sources, they won't work. So, we are locked in because of the purchase that Krismer made with using this supplier, okay? Get that, okay? My only comment to you was, when it comes time to replace the whole system, see if we can find one made here and owned here. And I can give you an example, Polpaz, I think a company you do business with, okay?
The company's called Knowing.
Pardon me?
The company's called Knowing.
Yes, okay, nice article, I think their product is, is Polpaz, nice article in the business section this week about them, it's St. Louis-owned company, the head of it is a former St. Louis County election authority, I think, okay? And you're buying from them? That's the kind of guy I'd like you to see when we have to replace all this. But, right now, okay, we have to supplement what we have to keep it running for a lot of years, to save the taxpayers' money, and we gotta buy what you need from your recommended vendor. And right, I spent some time this week trying to work on a 100 million dollar project to get the road problems fixed in Wentzville. If Vladimir Putin called me up tomorrow and said, I got 100 million dollars to fix the road project in Wentzville, by God, I'd say, send it on, Vladimir, I don't care where the money comes from, it's not coming out of the taxpayers' wallet, and it's gonna make the voting security, more secure, and our equipment work longer in this county, so I figured I'd owe that speech for you, okay?
Okay, I need a motion to approve the election authority vote tablets.
Motion to approve.
A second, do I have a second?
Second.
Okay, all those in favor of approving the election authority of Freedom Vote Tablets, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Opposed.
All right. Next on the agenda is bills for final passage, starting with bill number 4896. Claire?
Bill number 4896, an ordinance amending ordinance number 06-114 granting conditional use permit, CUP number 670, for an institution nursing home assisted living to Harvester residential care applicant.
Questions or comments?
Mr. Care, at the last meeting, there were some questions about a neighbor adjacent to this property, and the, if Mr. Gatman would like to come up, and I'd also like to put on the screen the gentleman that had issues with it, could they put that up for This is a neighbor that's, that is adjacent to this property, and this property is a commercial concern that's in the middle of a residential area, and the gentleman that has the most concern is the one that's receiving the bulk of the water that's coming from this property. So, the gentleman that's here tonight and the neighbor came together and tried to come up with a solution, but I don't see that coming up on the screen, he couldn't be here tonight, but he sent this text to me. You'd like to go ahead and speak before it comes up?
So, several years ago, the gentleman had come to us, there wasn't really an economic way to do it without a lot of engineering, but because we have the concrete already on site for the project, assuming it gets approved, there's already a 10 to 15% reduction just by doing the project. There's such win for everybody just from that perspective. We think we can get about 65 to 70% more reduction if we can work with the county, basically develop a curb, the natural slope of the concrete, the way it sits, it all goes to one corner anyway. So, a simple curb and a catch basin, we're estimating four by five, 18 inches deep, and then the county's only thing would be just to pipe it to the immediate manhole, or the water retention piece. The gentleman happens to work for Bridgeton, I believe, it's not county and parks, I think it's maintenance, like county and city maintenance, or city maintenance, I guess, and he said it's a pretty simple process, it's only about 120 feet away, so.
Okay.
He estimated it would be well over 60% reduction. We can't fix the whole problem, 'cause there's two manholes that are water retention pipes that actually flank his house, so all the water's going there regardless from all the properties around, but this should, we're probably the biggest vendor, 'cause we're a larger lot, and we have quite a bit more concrete, so it, less places for it to dissipate.
Mr. White?
Well, I guess I can't bring it up, but, but.
I'm sorry.
What this gentleman said is, I'm happy with Mr. Gatman's proposal, as long as the water is piped to the nearest catch basin, that's the crux of the problem, so, I mean, rather having it run over the surface of his property, he'd rather see you have it piped to that. And this hasn't been really written down or agreed to properly tonight, so I don't know how to proceed with this until it is. Do you have an idea, Mr. Gatman?
Make it a condition, John.
Pardon me?
Just make it a condition.
Yes.
But, any ordinance is a condition.
Well.
Yeah, so, the, the, the project as a whole does 10% regardless, and it was just by accident, it wasn't really intentional, just the way it's all designed, it'll, it'll give them some relief to begin with. The issue we have, I guess, I don't know if it's an issue really, I can put the curbs in my drawings, it's pretty cheap for me to do that part of it, but ultimately, I would need someone from the county to say, sure, we'll, we'll put a four-inch or six-inch pipe from here to there. If we can get that to happen, and I think that's pretty reasonable.
I don't know if that'd be sufficient, that's why it needs to be engineered, and...
And I guess that's where we get into the problem, I don't have $20,000, and that's what they're estimating engineering cost to be if I do, if I have to take it all the way over there, and then I have to get the approvals for, for all of that.
Well, I ask council, what should we do in this instance? 'Cause this isn't really set in stone as to what is going to happen, it's, it's proposed what could happen, but it's, it's not, so do we proceed, or do we wait until it's, it's agreed to by these two parties?
Right now, it is... Right now, this is set for final passage?
Yes.
And so, if you're not prepared to, to take a vote on it, if you, if you don't wanna take a vote on it, then you could table it, and then allow the parties to, to go back and look at it again, but.
Mr. Eland.
I, I think that we should probably hear from the county department, to see what their view is on it.
Mr. Eland, Mr. Chairman?
Yeah.
So, when can, when can you get this agreement worked out?
Well, I mean, right now, we have a handshake agreement to get it there, it's the, the idea.
So, you're talking about days?
I'm sorry?
You're talking about a mere days? A week, maybe?
I, I have no idea what the county will agree to. I know I can do my part of it without any problem whatsoever.
Well, you don't know what, so what, if you don't even know what you agree to, why are we wasting time talking about it anymore? They just need to...
I'm not sure what you mean, I know what I've agreed to.
I was gonna say, if, if, if there's an agreement, we're just waiting for somebody to, you know, you can pass it, I can hold it for 10 days. If I don't get the agreement, I can veto it and be back and run.
I guess that's what I'm looking for, I don't know exactly what agreement you want. If you want me and the neighbor to agree that they, that worked for us, then we're good. I'm happy to ink that and have it to you in 10 days, no problem.
Mr. Eland.
Let me make a suggestion here, we're gonna meet in seven days, so, because our December meetings are moved up, we don't have to wait two weeks to work this out, we can give you a week to work it out. You can talk with the folks that are here, that are right behind us, about what the county will do and what the county won't do, so you can understand what you would be on the hook for. I personally would not vote for this right now, because Mr. White's uncomfortable with the verbiage of what we've got. I, I don't like to vote on a handshake deal, especially with something as large, so what I'm gonna propose, if Mr. White's good with this, is that we table this bill until next Monday, give you the opportunity to work with the county, give you the opportunity to work with the landowner, come out with something, I would encourage you to talk with Mr. White, kind of figure out where you guys are all on common ground, where everybody's good enough to move forward, and if we are, then we'll come back here next Monday, we'll make that thing happen, and if not, then we'll vote the other way.
Could someone clarify exactly what you want? If it's just an agreement between me and the neighbor, we're, I'm fine with that, I got no problem, I'll see you next Monday, hopefully there's not 37 people here to talk, but if it's, if, if we're looking for an engineering plan that is approved by planning and zoning, that's not a seven-day thing, I don't think. So, I, maybe we just need to talk, but I, I guess we need, I need to know exactly what you want before I say that's okay.
Okay, yes, Mr. Cronin, finish up. Could you ask, ask either?
Years ago, I had to build, I built a warehouse building in Old Fallon, big building, and they wanted a hydraulic, hydraulic, hydrological study, Michael will know this, about how much runoff was coming. I didn't wanna spend 20 grand, okay? I went on the internet, did a little work, okay, figured out how many square foot it is, figured out what the maximum rainfall is in this area, and basically, you can, that'll tell you how many gallons per, per hour, gallons per minute that you have to design for, and then you can look up and see what a pipe capacity. I think what John's concerned about is the pipe you're proposing put enough, big enough to do that, okay? And while Mike might want an engineer seal to it, you can do it without an engineer seal, it's not that difficult.
And I guess that's what I would like to know, just from the perspective, so, this is going to be an improvement, no matter what. It will improve this gentleman's lot, no matter what. It also provides two jobs, eight beds of affordable housing for seniors, it's, it's, I think, a good project. The engineers I've talked to, it's really expensive. I did consult with Soil and Water Conservation District, I believe?
Yeah.
They came out and looked at it, and they were very helpful. I just wanna make sure I know what I'm getting into, I don't wanna shelter the project in general, but I don't, I'm not going to go to that level of extreme financially, so, I just wanna make sure we're working the same ballpark.
Those guys might be able to give you a recommendation on, on, on stormwater runoff for that.
They did, they came out and did a consultation with us.
Can you clear something up for us, Mr. Cronin?
So, the, the agreement is between the, the property owners. The work that's to be done is between the property owners. The county will not go onto private property and build any infrastructure or do anything that would, we wouldn't do that, we wouldn't spend taxpayer dollars on private property. So, the, whatever needs to be worked out is between the property owners and how they would achieve that, to the satisfaction of, of the council, and make, before they can make their decision. That, that's where it's at. My understanding was that they were talking, so, I passed that along to Councilman White, that they were working together on potential solution, and that, that was the last we had heard. So, that's where that, that's at.
All right. So, the solution is, as the gentleman, if these two gentlemen get together, is to pipe the water to the nearest storm sewer. So, that's what they need to come together on. And you've heard tonight, the county is not gonna give you assistance on it, so you need to work with the gentleman, your neighbor, and find out, you know, how you're gonna achieve that. If it's gonna cost you more money, your project, then that's what it's gonna have to do.
We will look at it, like this will go from there, I'm just not sure who gives us the guidance on where, what, and that, but I mean, I don't know, I'm not sure if we'll do the project, so we'll just, we have to lose, unfortunately, it's a lose for the county, but that may be where we're at, depending on the cost of the infrastructure.
Okay, would you like to table this?
If the county, yes, I think so, give them time to work it out. And let me ask one question before we do table, is there any assistance that the county can give them, as far as advice as how to do it?
Yeah, we can, Development Review Team actually worked with the neighboring property owner back in 2010 on, and made some suggestions on French drains and potential other projects that could help them with moving some of that water. So, we, we can do that as well, we do that all the time with, with private property owners, give them suggestions.
Okay, so, you have a second? Okay, motion to table, and a second on the bill number 4896, so it's, all those in favor of tabling, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay. Moving along, 40, bill number 4897 for final passage.
Bill number 4897, an ordinance authorizing acceptance of a grant from the Federal Emergency Management Agency to fund 100% of the projected total cost of acquiring two residential structures, sustaining severe and repetitive loss in flood, flood hazard zones of unincorporated St. Charles County, and further authorizing the county executive or his, or his designee to execute documents and perform acts that may be required for purchasing and demolishing those structures.
Any questions or comments on this bill? Seeing none, please call the roll.
Bill number 4897, an ordinance authorizing acceptance of a grant from the Federal Emergency Management Agency to fund 100% of the projected total cost of acquiring two residential structures sustaining severe and repetitive loss in flood hazard zones of unincorporated St. Charles County, and further authorizing the county executive or his designee to execute documents and perform acts that may be required for purchasing and demolishing those structures. Councilman, Cronin?
Yes.
Councilman Brazel? Councilman Eland?
Yes.
Councilman Hollander?
Yes.
Councilman Hammond?
Yes.
Councilwoman Schneider?
Yes.
Councilman White?
Yes. Okay, bill number 4897 passes. Next up to be considered is amended substitute bill number 4898.
Amended substitute bill number 4898, an ordinance amending sections 132.040, 405.060, 405.525, 410.110, 410.145, 410.160, 410.210, 410.220, 410.410, 410.460, 412.080, and 420.020 of the ordinances of St. Charles addressing additional regulatory requirements and design criteria for post-construction stormwater management.
Mr. Eland?
I feel bad after you just read all that to say what I'm about to say. So I know Mr. Cronin and Mr. Brazel, and I believe Mr. Schneider have been working with the county on addressing this problem, and we've got a new bill that gets closer, if it's not there already, but it gets much closer to where we were. So therefore, I'm gonna make a motion to withdraw this amended bill since we have another bill to take its place, and we're gonna start over with that one, which I think has gotten us down the road. But with that, it would take concurrence from three additional members to withdraw this bill.
I will concur.
I'll concur.
I concur. Okay, we have the necessary number of people that concur, so amended substitute bill number 4898 is now not in existence, okay? Bills for introduction, starting out with bill number 4900.
Bill number 4900, requested by Jennifer George, sponsored by council as a whole, an ordinance authorizing the county executive to execute a project contract between St. Charles County and St. Charles Community College for one-stop operation and career services provided through the Missouri Job Center of St. Charles County.
Okay, any questions or comments on this particular, okay? Seeing none, we move on to bill number 4901 for introduction.
Bill number 4901, request, requested by Mike Hurlbert, sponsored by council as a whole, an ordinance amending sections 132.040, 405.060, 405.525, 410.110, 410.145, 410.160, 410.210, 410.220, 410.410, 410.460, 412.080, and 420.020 of the ordinances of St. Charles County addressing additional regulatory requirements and design criteria for post-construction stormwater management.
Okay, questions or comments? Mr. Cronin?
We got this Wednesday afternoon. I put a call in to Mike late Wednesday afternoon, and because holiday, we played a little phone tag, and we got to talk about about four o'clock today. I've read the 127 pages. I still have some concerns, and I'll just briefly address them real quick. One is, I don't, the tree preserve, if this is truly designed to be environmentally sensitive, protect our environment, it, the tree preservation ordinance, preservation portions of it exempt commercial and industrial, and that's on page 88 of that. So I don't know if we really wanna think, I think we need to know an explanation why we're exempting commercial and industrial development from the tree preservation requirements that we require for subdivisions. Also, I think some clarifications needed on page 112 and 113, because it talks about warrant, water quality for residential areas, storm detention for subdivisions, but it really doesn't say a heck of a lot about commercial stuff. But me and Mike want this thing over, I think I want it over with as bad as Mike does, so I was prepared to table this for tonight, but I think let's roll ahead with the first reading so we can keep it moving down the road. But Mike, there's some issues with that, and I'll tell you the other issue that I have that's a big one. According to the developers, this is five grand more a lot for subdivisions out of my district, okay? My district borders Warren County and Lincoln County. They don't have to comply with this stuff, okay? So this puts our developers at a disadvantage economically with those guys in Warrant and Lincoln Counties. And that's a concern of mine a little bit, because I know those subdivisions out in the western part of my district, and it's mostly working class people. It's police officers, school teachers, stuff like that, and five grand on the top of a house put a few of them out of, unable to reach houses. So I still have some concerns about that. But that all being said, I trust me and Mike will do the best we can in the next two, or week, I guess a week to get it done.
Mr. Eland?
I did want to point out that both of these two bills, because we are meeting again in seven days, for any bill to have a second vote on it, or to have the vote in our second reading, we have to have 10 days. So I appreciate what you're saying, and neither one of these bills are gonna have a final vote. In a week from now, we're gonna have to wait three weeks to that next meeting. So you're gonna have plenty of time to work with Mike. Lucky you to.
What a nice, what a nice Christmas gift.
There you go.
I had to deal with Councilman Cronin.
But I just thought it's important to remember that, that we don't need to table these two. We're not gonna be able to vote on them because we're not gonna have the 10 days, but that'll get us until that second meeting, so.
Do you have a question?
Actually, I was just gonna make a point that the councilman just made, that these are, cannot be up for passage before the December 21st meeting.
I feel so good personally to know that I made that point before John.
Shows you some experience showing up there a little bit, all right. Do, is there any table bills to be removed? I don't see any. Okay, that, any announcements miscellaneous?
I know Mr. Brazel would want to invite everybody down to the Augusta Christmas party, or Defiance Christmas Parade. I saw his email. I think that's next weekend, but I'm not sure. So I just wanted to make that point, but I wanted to point out that Maryam Ayen passed away. And, yeah, I don't, I don't know, there are finer person that existed on God's green earth than Maryam. She is just, she was fantastic. She was extremely welcoming, and I think she has a lot to do with the good fortune of so many people, especially those who are less fortunate. And she was a champion for those who couldn't champion themselves, and her funeral services are coming up this next week. So, so many people know her, and I don't know if everybody knew that she passed, but I just wanted to acknowledge Maryam and how awesome she was, and she will definitely be missed, and we were grateful that she was here, and we were sorry to miss her.
Very, very well.
Absolutely.
Very well put. Okay, any other announcements miscellaneous?
Motion to dismiss?
Okay, motion accepted. Thank you for everyone's patience this evening.